We'll call the October 22nd, 2018 regular meeting of the Amherst City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Miller?
President.
Mr. Janik?
Here.
Mr. Van Turin?
Here.
Mr. Dambinski?
Here.
Mr. Cowgill?
Here.
Mr. Van Arsky?
Here.
Mr. Mayhorn?
President.
We will stand for the prayer by Chancellor Mayhorn and the pledge of the flag by Sartreman Arms against...
Please join me in bowing your heads. Gracious God, as another election cycle greets us, let us take a moment to recognize all those in government and political offices who have chosen to be public servants. We ask for continued guidance so that the choices made always reflect the best for whom we serve. And now let the words in our mouths and meditations in our hearts be acceptable in your vision. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go to item four on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Minutes of the regular council meeting held October 18, 2018. Minutes of the finance committee meeting held October 15, 2018.
Mr. Cowgill?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Mr. Van Arsky?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Janik?
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin?
Yes.
Mr. Dambinski?
Yes.
Mr. Cowgill?
Yes.
Mr. Van Arsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Consent agenda is accepted. We will now go to item five on the agenda. I would like to introduce Ms. Rose Simmons, who is the partnership coordinator from the Philadelphia region of the U.S. Census Bureau, here to talk about the 2020 census. Ms. Simmons.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I would like to also introduce my two colleagues who are with me here today, both from Ohio, Mark Boyd and Mr. Michael Settles. The 2020 census is upon us, and I'm here today bringing you good news about what that means for Amherst, Ohio. So we are going to do a little background, a brief history, and I don't want to bore you, because I know you all know this already, but our first census was conducted in 1790 under the direction of Secretary of State at that time, Thomas Jefferson. The decennial census is taken every 10 years in the zero year. We count all persons living in the United States on April the 1st of the year ending in zero. Census results directly affect how federal funding is allocated to state, local, and tribal governments. Little background, if you see our mile markers there, I'd like to point out that, starting in 2010, the census was a short form only, 10 questions, 10 minutes or less. The long-form data are collected in the American Community Survey, which occurs every month of every year, where approximately 250,000 households across the nation are sampled, and those addresses receive the long form. It used to be one in six households received that long-form questionnaire in the zero year. We discovered that by the time the information was tabulated, aggregated, and published in statistical format, it was often outdated. So Congress enacted legislation in 2005 to conduct that survey, the American Community Survey, every month of every year. The census has evolved. In 1790, federal marshals actually were enumerators, and they conducted the census on horseback. In 2020, the 2020 census, this will be the first time we will offer an Internet response option. This is huge. It is new. It offers great possibilities, also great challenges. We understand that there is a digital divide, and that in some areas, some communities, there is connectivity issues. So we're here today to talk to you about this, and hopefully partner with you to work around those issues. So now, the purpose of the census is to conduct a count of the population, the total population, and then we disseminate the results to the president. The uses of the census data include primarily the apportionment of representation in Congress. Article 1, Section 2 of the Constitution mandates that we take a count of the total population in the U.S. every 10 years. It helps to draw congressional districts, state legislative districts, school districts, voting districts. It distributes more than $675 billion in federal funds annually, more than $675 billion in funds per year. It helps to inform in terms of decisions and planning for federal, local, and state governments. Businesses and nonprofit groups, they make organizational decisions all based upon census data. Businesses want to know, what is the prevailing wage in the area? What are my competitors offering? What is the job applicant pool like? What is the educational attainment of that applicant pool? What are the school districts like in this area? Where are executives want to move into the area to enroll their children in the schools? So in 2010, the congressional apportionment resulted in this map here. In Ohio, we lost two seats. Ohio is losing population, the population is aging, and we lost two seats. The states there in blue, they gained, and the gray-colored states saw no change. Okay, so what is the environment for the decennial census for 2020? We're in a rapidly changing environment in terms of technology. There's an information explosion overload, 24-hour cable news, a distrusting government, declining response rates across the board, across all surveys, an increasingly diverse population, informal, complex living arrangements, more grandparents are raising grandchildren than ever before in the history of our country. We have a mobile population. People, they don't buy homes and settle and nest anymore. They move, they rent, and they move around. We're in a constrained fiscal environment. So in this current environment, we still have to conduct the census and conduct a complete and accurate census. So how do we plan to do this? Every 10 years, we do a design, tweak, and try to improve what we've learned from the past. So if you look there in the lower left-hand corner of this slide, we first must establish where to count. And we do that by working with local governments through an operation called LUCA, the Local Updating of Census Addresses. And governments, they get a once every 10-year opportunity to see our address lists, and they can take a look at it and see, okay, these addresses no longer exist in our area. We have new addresses that you don't have listed here. They help us to fine-tune that list. Then after we build this list, and there are several layers to building that list, we work with the U.S. Postal Service, we work through our boundary and annexation survey, we have people who actually boots-on-the-ground, we hire people in your community, and they go out and they canvass the area for addresses to make sure the list is as accurate as possible. We have to know every address where people could possibly live in order to start the foundation of complete and accurate census. We go up to the upper left-hand corner, and we have to motivate people to respond. And that's where my branch comes in. We are the partnership branch, the outreach branch. We work with local governments, the highest elected officials, city council members, county executives, county commissioners, organizations, nonprofits, social organizations, all in an effort to outreach to the community, to help them to understand the whats in it for me. Why is it important that I respond to the census? Then we have to count the population. This time, as mentioned, we will have an Internet self-response. So in doing that, as I said, there is a challenge, okay? A privilege and a challenge. And that challenge is, for homes where there is no computer, for areas where there is no connectivity, how do you ensure that those people can also be counted? We're partnering with governments such as yourself, with libraries, with universities, to offer computers, pools of computers during certain days of the week, hours of the day, so people can come in and complete their census questionnaire. There's also a telephone response option, where they can actually call in and complete the questionnaire by phone. There's a paper self-response, too, for those who don't want the other two options of the Internet or phone, they can request a paper questionnaire. And then we have our non-response follow-up operation, where we will be hiring people in Amherst to go out and knock on the doors of people who do not respond to collect the information on a mobile device. We release the results to the president in December 31st of 2020, or before, and we release the counts for redistricting to the states April 1st of 2021. Our operational timeline, we are now in October of 2018, and if you see there, our partnership specialists began working for the Census Bureau, that's these gentlemen here. They're out there in the community, generating partnerships with community leaders to help get the message out that it's important. We have several operations throughout the period on our operations side where we will count, where we will conduct the count. I want to point out the group quarters operation, that's where we count people who live in places where they share common areas, for example, dormitories, nursing homes, group homes, prisons, that's our group quarters operation. We will conduct that in February of 2020, so you know those people are not left out, we do conduct that count. April 1st of 2020 is census day. That is the reference period, the period in which the question asks, where were you living on or as of April 1st of 2020? Our non-response follow-up, and that's where we go out and knock on the doors for housing units for which we have not received a form, that begins in May of 2020. We're going to move back a little bit, because I failed to mention, in August of 2019, we conduct the in-field address canvassing, and that's where we will be hiring people in Lorain County to canvass the area with a mobile device to refine that address list. Taking a look ahead, in 2019, we will begin opening field offices. We will open six offices in the state of Ohio in January of 2019, followed by an additional 30 offices in the state of Ohio in June of 2019. If you'll take a look at this map here, it shows our regional office boundaries. I work out of the Philadelphia, Pennsylvania office, which covers nine areas, Ohio, Pennsylvania, West Virginia, Maryland, Virginia, Kentucky and Tennessee, and the District of Columbia. So in wave one, in April of 2019, that's actually been moved up to January, I apologize, we will open an office in Columbus. In wave two, and that's been moved up to June of 2019, we will open offices in the following locations, Toledo, Cleveland, Akron, Mansfield, South Point, Dayton, and Cincinnati, We have jobs, so if you know of anybody who's looking for work, temporary employment of up to two years, we encourage you, particularly good people, to send them our way. We're going to have several office manager positions, those are well-paid positions, and I'll go over the pay scale shortly. And just to give you an example there of the positions and what they entail, we'll also be hiring several field workers that are the enumerators that will knock on the Here are our pay rates for Ohio. You notice that these are subject to change. We always have the New Year COLAS, Cost of Living, so adjustments, so those will be adjusted upward as the New Year of 2019 rolls around. Okay, this is a map showing the Ohio Low Response Score. And what that Low Response Score is, it is a metric that's been developed by the Census Bureau, and it's to classify geographic areas according to their propensity to self-respond in surveys. So this LRS, it predicts the response rate, the non-response rate, in a given area. It's updated annually, and the data is derived from the American Community Survey, which is the questionnaire that replaced the long form, and the previous decennial census. So this data is developed based upon data from the 2010 census and the American Community Survey five-year estimates. So the higher the score, the greater the possibility that it is predicted that this area will not respond, and that score gives a number. We look at in our region, LRS score of 25 or higher, and if you take a look there, so the deeper the red on this map, okay, the more difficulty we are going to have trying to get the cooperation or get people to self-respond. Now, I don't want you to think that that means that we have a low response in that area, because after this, we then do our non-response follow-up operation, where we go out and knock on doors, and we improve that rate. So how can you help? Well, you can provide space that can be used for testing and onboarding, training of individuals in your community, in Amherst and in the county. You can assist us by providing a list of residential institutions. And this was provided during our LUCA operation, for which you participated in, and the planning department and planning commissions also included lists of residential areas, residential institutions that will be a part of our group quarters, providing lists of shelters, service providers, and transient locations. We conduct a service-based enumeration count, where we count the homeless for three days in March of 2020, at the end of March. That list assists us in doing that count. You can help us to promote temporary job opportunities. We have temporary jobs, they are high-paying jobs, good jobs, it provides people with experience, it provides seniors with extra income, and it's a fun place to work. You can form a complete count committee. This is a committee of elected officials, community groups, faith-based, and social service organizations, and businesses. And it helps to spread the word about the importance of the census and what it means for Amherst. You can encourage participation in the census through newsletters, on your websites, alert systems, drop-in articles. We will actually have a nationwide communications campaign, where we will have prepared social media messaging, that all you have to do is hit the button and push it out, drop-in articles, prepare. So this complete count committee is a volunteer committee, and it's established by tribal, state, and local governments and/or community leaders to increase awareness, you act as census ambassadors about the census, and to motivate residents in the community to respond. So there are municipal complete count committees, and it's a mutually beneficial partnership between the committee and the Census Bureau. And it's at the highest level within each city, so the mayor will often appoint members to the complete count committee. And committee members consist of influential community leaders who come with resources or are willing to work, roll up their sleeves, and ensure a complete count of Amherst citizens and residents. So you would communicate the importance of the census through local messaging. You know Amherst better than myself or these two gentlemen here. You know what works here, what doesn't work here. You are the trusted voices, and we ask that you leverage that voice to the community to ensure that Amherst receives the appropriate appropriations and funding. Next slide, please. So why should you inform, why should you form a complete count committee? Our records and history shows that effective CCCs, complete count committees, increase the response rate within the community. Again, you're a trusted voice. You can utilize your local knowledge, your expertise, and to design a plan and awareness campaign that will be effective in Amherst. We want to bring together a cross-section of community members whose focus is 2020 census awareness. When should you start? Now. We have complete count committees starting across Ohio, and they are planning and working to that point to kick off and have an event April 1st of 2019, a one-year-out event, showing their participation in the census and the fact that it's important, and why it's important to the community. George Washington University conducted a study in February of 2018, and in that study, they found that in Ohio, for every resident that is missed, that is not counted, you would lose $1,814. That's per year times 10. There are no do-overs in the census, the time is now. I've had mayors call me, actually in 2018, to say, I applied for an EPA grant, and I was denied, and the census numbers are not right. Can we change them? Can we do a special census? No, we can't. The numbers are what they are, and so it's best to get out on the front end and to help people to understand that this funding affects your highway funding, it affects your Head Start funding, your Title 20 funding, it affects school nurses, the federal school breakfast and lunch program. So many things are determined, where shopping malls are built, shopping centers, all determined by the census data. Census data is the gold standard. So for any federal funding, they utilize census data. We've had communities hire engineering firms, marketing firms, to do their research and package it up really well. If the funding is coming from the federal government, they will deny the grant, they will tell you, you have to use census data, the American Community Survey data, the decennial census data. It is so important that residents participate. I live in, previously lived in Columbus, Ohio, and we had a bus route that was canceled through the Transit Authority, and there were several residents that came to the city council meeting and complained about that bus route being canceled. And we had a gentleman there who knew why the bus route was canceled, and luckily he took to the podium, and he stated, it was canceled due to the data on the American Community Survey. The residents in that census track and block did not respond, so they were unaware that that bus route was needed. It is so critically important that people understand the whats in it for me. Again, there are multiple benefits of a complete count committee. I would encourage you to, I won't even say think about it, I would encourage you to begin planning for a complete count committee to ensure a complete and accurate count of This is a suggestion of the types of people that you would want to sit on that committee. Again, this is just a suggestion, you would do what's best, what you know that's best for Amherst. The partnership specialists will act as an advisor to your complete count committee, answering any questions, providing you with materials and information prior to that information being made available to the general public. Again, these are some of the subcommittees. I would like to point out the library subcommittee, that is going to be critically important due to the technology and the Internet self-response, also recruiting. We are currently hiring, I put in your folders, a palm card that gives the 800 number and a website for hiring. We began hiring in your community today, Monday, the 22nd of October, was the first day we began hiring recruiting assistants. Also, I would like to point out the philanthropic subcommittee in the bottom right. There are philanthropic groups that we have been working with for over a year now, and they have funds that they are willing to give to complete count committees, organizations, and individuals to promote the 2020 census. Again, begin now. Identify your point of contact or liaison for your CCC, coordinate. We will make ourselves available to you in terms of planning, in terms of questions that you have. You have my card, you have my email address. We encourage you to ensure that Amherst has a complete and accurate count in 2020. Again, here's information for you to, if you have questions about census operations or the positions that we are posting, and there's an email address there for our regional office in Philadelphia. We encourage you to connect with us, to work with us, to partner with us for the 2020 census. Thank you so very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. And are there any questions? Do we have any questions from members of council? Before and while they're thinking about it, I don't anticipate this council meeting lasting very long, and your fellow members of the Census Bureau staff are welcome to stay and answer questions after council meeting if individual council members have questions. But with that, are there any questions right now for the members of the Census Bureau staff?
Thank you.
Mr. Dambinski?
What was the number that you gave for every person that does not?
Per the George Washington University study, $1,814 per year, times 10, times the number undercounting. Our largest undercounting groups are children, 0 to 5. Why? Maybe because parents are being protective, maybe they think only adults in the house are included on the form, but those are the groups that utilize the services, the priest schools, the clinics, and they need to be counted. Second-largest group, 18 to 24 college students, millennials, who are often very busy. We're hoping that being able to respond online and through a mobile device or smartphone will help to improve that rate. Seniors are also an undercurrent population. So we're working with the areas on aging, we're also working with assisted living centers, you know, to try to get the word out.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now? Ms. Dambinski?
So if they're doing things online now, which, you know, the students will be doing that, so you send a form to the home, and suppose one person is like in college, how do you make sure that that count is correct, that you're not overcounting or undercounting?
Excellent question. Okay, so students should be counted where they reside in school. So if, you know, if you have universities here, those students would count here. Why? Because they're utilizing the services here. So I have daughters who are away at school. My daughter got sick, she attends school in New York. When she got sick, they didn't hesitate. EMTs came and they took her to the emergency room. She's utilizing their services, she should count there. I wouldn't count her here. And that's a part of our Census on Campus campaign, where we educate students and parents that they're counted where they are, in the dormitory or in the off-campus apartment, not at home. The same thing with snowbirds. If you have a home in Amherst and you go to Arizona, you know, five months out of the year, you would count in Amherst. That's where you are most of the time.
Any other questions for right now? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Simmons, and again, we invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting. We have three major items on the agenda, and then we'll proceed, and hopefully people will stay and ask questions then. Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll go to item six, acknowledgement of the public pertaining to items on the agenda. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will go to item seven, ordinances and resolutions, first reading, 7:08, please. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any item on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we will go to item seven, ordinances and resolutions, first reading, seven A,
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Yeah, that was actually 48. In the, that's, I actually, item 48. Yeah, and, yeah, so change your item there, say 1848. Mr. Calvert.
Just a question. This is supposed to have the emergency.
The, the form is provided us by the county. This is the form they use, but it has to be adopted this evening. So we need, so we need to have, right. No, we don't need to add emergency to it. It just needs to be adopted tonight. So you need to suspend rules this evening and then adopt it. Yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to suspend council rules so that item seven A may be passed on the first reading.
Okay, Ms., yeah, Mr. Van Turin. There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule that requires three readings so that item seven A, which is A7818-48, can be adopted this evening. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Augur, you know, numbers have changed when it comes to mileage, amounts authorized before the emergency. It isn't a big issue to change. But we do need emergency, just there's no change. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. Any more, any additional questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin.
Yes.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cowger.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Nehorn.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Winarski.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Calvert.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin.
Yes.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cowger.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Nehorn.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
You'll be resolution R1810.
Okay. We will go to item seven B, please.
An ordinance accepting grant funds from Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, in the amount of $313,396, and authorizing the payment of a 5% match from local funds for the purchase of radios and radio equipment, and declaring an emergency.
And this is A1849. Mr. Van Turin.
Move to suspend council rules so seven B can be passed on this reading.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to suspend the rule that requires three readings so that this item can be passed on the first reading. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin.
Yes.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cowger.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Nehorn.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. That rule is suspended. Mr. Dumbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Janik.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt. Comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin.
Yes.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cowger.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Nehorn.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
You'll be ordinance O1836.
We'll go on to item eight, ordinances and resolutions, second reading. There are none. Go to item nine, ordinances and resolutions, third reading, nine A, please.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase and installation of equipment necessary for improved video recording and broadcast of municipal meetings not to exceed $50,000.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Move to adopt.
Mr. Winarski.
I'll second with a question of the mayor.
Sure.
Just curious, if the funds for this will be $20,18, correct? But if we don't pass this on emergency, you're almost going to have to wait till 2019.
You know, this is actually under the $50,000 amount. I don't actually need council authorization to spend this amount. I would just...
No, my question is, if we just move this through the normal process, you can't spend the money for 30 days. Do you need the emergency to spend the money this year?
No.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Janik.
Yes.
Mr. Van Turin.
Yes.
Mr. Dumbinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cowger.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Nehorn.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm waiting for the next. The ordinance O1837.
Thank you. Go to item 10, miscellaneous and acknowledgment of the public. We have item 10A, which is consideration of liquor permit for Dolgin, Dolgin Midwest DBA Dollar General store, 1163 Milan Avenue, for a C1 permit, which is beer only in original sealed container for carryout only. Comments or, comments or concerns or questions? Seeing none. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on any subject? Thank you. Seeing none, we go to item 11, agenda requests and committee meeting schedules.
To finance A1850, the 2019 interim budget, and the information will follow later on this week, so I'll distribute that information later on. And then to finance A1851, finance and utility software upgrade not to exceed $150,000. And that's only two items I have, Madam President.
Committee chairs, finance. Mr. Cowger.
Yes, two items. First item, A1850, the 2019 interim budget, and A1851, finance and utility software upgrade not to exceed $150,000. And that is complete, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to call a meeting for next week?
Yes.
Okay. Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
November, not next week, November 5th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Next week is, next week is the 5th Monday, so.
So Monday, the 5th.
November 5th, yes. Okay, November 5th. 7 p.m.?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Building and lands, Mr. Winarski.
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Streets, Mr. Van Turin.
No items, please cancel.
Thank you. Community development, Mr. Miller.
No items, please cancel.
Thank you. Executive, Mr. Miller.
No items, please cancel, Madam President.
Thank you. Ordinance, Mr. Dumbinski.
No items at this time, Madam President, please cancel.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Janik.
No items, Madam President, please cancel.
Thank you. Recycle, Mr. Nehorn.
Please keep recycling.
Thank you. Technology, Mr. Dumbinski.
No items at this time, Madam President, please cancel.
Thank you very much. Police and fire, Mr. Winarski.
Nothing at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Annexation, Mr. Van Turin.
No items, please cancel.
Thank you. We will go to item 12, reports of the administration. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Pitek.
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ramsey.
No report.
Nordekor.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jeffries.
I'll follow suit, no report, Mr. Mayor.
I guess I'm not allowed to say anything either. But unless I have any questions, no report, myself either.
Thank you very much. Mr. Miller.
Thank you. We have item A1851, utility software upgrade. Is that part of our programmed upgrade to Aldean Software?
That's separate. This is something different. This is all of our purchasing software, requisition software, our payroll software. It's a general upgrade of pretty much all the software that runs a city. It's been a long time since we've had one. Mr. Pitek might want to add to that.
So the last time we had an install or an upgrade to our financial software, utility software, was back between 2000, 2004, coinciding with the actual number, so it's been 15 or more years. The systems were installed at different times, and they're on different databases between the utility department and the finance department, so they don't speak to each other. So this will be not only an opportunity to get somewhat modern with the times, as we brought in an IT director to implement the citywide systems, but it'll be an opportunity to really bring those two departments together and speak to each other. So everything from handwritten POs and requisitions will now be electronic. Time entry will now be electronic, which there may be some unpopular things happening across the city, but this will be beneficial as we start eliminating difficulties and things of that nature.
So just to clarify, just basically bring us to a more of a seamless integration, putting departments throughout the city, it's going to be off the same financial software? Yes. Thank you.
Then we will have a representative from that company that'll be here, and some of our department heads will be here too, if you have questions.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Trish.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Anyone else wishing to ask questions? I maintain a motion to accept. Mr. Calvert.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports of the administration.
Mr. Van Turin.
Second, Madam.
There's a motion and a second to accept the reports of the administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Motion is carried seven to zero. Go to item 13, adjournment. Mr. Dumbinski.
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Calvert.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying aye. Motion carries seven to zero. We adjourn for 7:44. Thank you.